Administrative conference of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. Councilman Webb will open us with an invocation, followed by the pledge.
Father, we have a Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. We just thank you for all the many blessings you pour out on us. We ask for your blessing on each and every one here today. Father, we just thank you for the blood that we're covered by. Father, we just ask you go with us today in today's meeting. And may everything we do and say be in your grace. We just thank you for all you do for us. We just thank you for the beautiful council meeting, building that we can meet in. And we just thank you for all the blessings that you just continue to pour out on us. And we ask you to forgive us where we fail you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Men and clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. McCullough, Mr. Everson, Mr. Oliver Jacob, Mr. Corbin, Mr. Webb, Mr. Shine, Mr. Samty.
Present.
Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th Administrative Conference and the June 11th City Council meeting. At this time, does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests? Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have some representatives here from Sportran. I want them to come up and maybe give us an abbreviated version of an update on the relocation of the bus terminal from downtown to Murphy Street. I hope they'll come back and maybe give us something a little more expanded on tomorrow, Mr. Chairman. So if they could, be allowed to come forward this time.
We were very excited with the turnout and the success we had at our public hearing process. Normally, a transit system will have a public hearing, we'll announce it, and we'll have it held somewhere. And there's very little participation, and we really don't get an opportunity to talk to our riders. We wanted to do it differently this year. We had a kind of a celebration-type public hearing, a meeting, if you will, at our downtown bus terminal. We had Mike McSwain, and the architects were there. We had pictures of our building, the layout, the design. And what we did is we went around with actually coolers of ice water and juice. We had a popcorn machine. We were giving popcorn to kids. And what we were doing is just trying to get people to come and look at our pictures and talk to us. And it was very engaging. Our staff was very excited. And what I found is that a lot of the passengers were excited too. So people, the feedback that we got that day was very positive. Honestly, nothing negative about moving. Some comments and some constructive criticism on routes and service, and some issues that were specific to certain people's travel. But everything about the move was positive. The question, and was answered, is how are we going to maintain service in the downtown area once the terminal is gone? And we explained that we don't really know right now exactly what the service will look like. It could be some of the existing routes that continue to come in through that downtown area. We may receive recommendations that we should do a downtown circulator where maybe it's free or a minimal price, and you could just ride anywhere downtown. And what we would like to do is try to connect the two river fronts, connect Shreveport Commons, connect the intermodal facility, and then still have some type of small terminal or bus stop transfer point at the Crockett Street location. So I think that the response, people are happy to know that we haven't forgotten about that downtown area. They're glad to hear that we're working on it and that we have a plan. And I think they were pretty confident that we're going to make sure that the service stays the same. So a lot of excitement about that. We then had a meeting at Airport Park where we had a more formal hearing. We had some residents and passengers show up there. Councilman Jenkins was there for that evening, and just got to hear more feedback from people. And most of all, it was still relevant to service issues, areas that they want bus service, there's not a bus, maybe some routes that, particularly some of our Boja routes that are coming in late, some of that kind of feedback. But it was real good for us, and not just for me, but for the rest of our management team. All of our staff was out there. We were all engaging and asking questions. So it was real good for us to hear from our passengers one-on-one, and then to use that opportunity to kind of spin into our Dump the Pump, which was our National Dump the Pump Day that we celebrated last week. Once again, we went after it with a carnival-type attitude. We had a couple of radio stations down. We had a prize wheel where we were giving away day passes and T-shirts and some stuff the radio people had given us. So we really feel like we've really gotten out there a lot in the public, and not just in the media, but we did get some excellent media coverage as well. But really having a conversation and having this dialogue with our passengers, and letting them know that we have some things that we're planning to do to improve our service and hopefully get as much feedback from them as we can.
Mr. Chairman, I want to commend Sportran and SPAR and the others who are working with this relocation. I think you're doing a great job of getting the word out to the public. You know, more often than not, when you're doing something new, people say, "Well," you know, they don't know about it. I think in this case, you made every effort to let people know exactly what's being planned, and you got everybody on board that can answer the questions. I know that's appreciated. A lot of the feedback that I'm receiving is positive feedback, just as you say it. And I certainly appreciate the fact that you all are going to pay close attention to the downtown issue, you know, people being able to get in and out of downtown with the relocation. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that they be able to come back, hopefully on tomorrow, and give a presentation where you could reach maybe a broader audience through television, if that's okay, because we surely want to keep the public engaged with a very important move like this. And I had an opportunity to see the photographs and everything of the new location, I think. Everything looks very, very nice, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have to say, I was at the hearing session the other day. Almost, you know, when you go to those listening sessions, you don't really feel like everyone is represented until you hear something negative. You know, like, you almost want to hear one bad comment, just to make sure you're getting it all. Well, I heard my one bad comment, and it wasn't too bad. So, you know, I was pretty happy with the responses we were getting. There were a lot of questions, but I think that it was, you know, people were generally pleased with the answers to those questions, and so it was great. And the Dump the Pump event was also really well-received, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Right there. Thanks, God. Thanks, you. Any other recognitions from council members? If not, Mayor Glover, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council members, Mr. Chairman, I want to start by, once again, expressing my great thanks and appreciation for your leadership last week in convening the special meeting that we held on Friday to discuss the Dog Park issue. I know we had three of the seven council members in attendance. Several, I think, were out of town, and others had other obligations, but I thought we had a very constructive, forward-looking conversation. So I want to let you know how much we certainly appreciate the opportunity. I also want to express to the rest of the council that we do have the PowerPoint presentation that was made. Hopefully, we have forwarded that to council staff at this point. If we haven't, we'll look forward to getting that to you all as quickly as we can. I had the opportunity today to visit with Miss Agatha McCall, Agatha Fertitta McCall, there on Fairfield, and picked up some lunch prior to the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. And she expressed great, great enthusiasm about the possibility of being able to see something along this line developed in proximity to her establishment, a place that has so much real, true, and authentic Shreveport history connected to and a part of it, and the Princess Park location. I think it's probably less than a half a block from their front door. So, again, thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to continuing the dialogue as we go forward towards resolution. Also, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I want to make sure that you all are aware of, and hopefully will be able to be in attendance this coming Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. out at the port of Shreveport Boja, the official dedication and ribbon-cutting of the Ron Pack operation. It is not only the manufacturing, but also the official relocation of their worldwide headquarters that is moving here to Shreveport. You all may remember, we made the initial announcement of Shreveport having been selected for their manufacturing operation in 2011. We came back in June of last year and announced that in addition to the manufacturing operation that they would be relocating their worldwide headquarters to Shreveport as well, and bring with it, and anticipated an additional 100 jobs, over and above the couple of hundred that have already been projected. Ron Settle is going to be here personally on Wednesday to take part in that ribbon-cutting, and certainly encourage, if your schedules will allow, that you guys come out and join the rest of the business community throughout this area, as well as the very capable employees out at Ron Pack, in celebrating this new development, and certainly another testament to the positive direction that the city is still moving in. I want to add to that, Mr. Chairman, I think I had a chance to speak with you briefly about it, and look forward to having an opportunity to detail with the rest of the council. You all will remember that as a part of our master planning efforts, we talked about the idea of doing a coordinated city-parish economic development entity that was dubbed SKEETA, Shreveport-Caddo Economic Development Authority. Unfortunately, the parish end of that effort has gotten a bit stalled, and based upon recent meetings that I've had with parish leadership, does not appear to be headed towards resolution at any point in the near future. The recognition of that effort is one that says that the city of Shreveport and the parish of Caddo both would be well-served to have a separate independent economic development entity that would work in concert with the regional North Louisiana Economic Partnership along with the State Department of Economic Development. Part of what I have had done in an effort to allow us to at least have some options for moving forward was to task David Dodd, the consultant who pulled together the initial Shreveport-Caddo approach, to refine that to a Shreveport approach. He has, in fact, done that. We should be in a position to be able to detail that effort to the council, hopefully as early as this week, as you all's schedules will allow. It's going to call for a similar process to what was done with SKEETA, where we'll have to send an actual draft of the proposed plan and scope of work that the entity would engage in to our regional entity for approval. In our particular case, in this region, that would be the CDC Coordinating and Development Corporation with Maxxal Comp. Once it's signed off there, it comes back for action approval by this council, and then we afford all that on to Baton Rouge and what have you, and it gives us a chance to be able to, again, do something that allows us to be able to move forward on at least a Shreveport portion of what has been recommended, and from my perspective, and I think hopefully some of you all as well, something that's very much needed for us here in Shreveport and throughout this region. So we look forward to being able to speak more in depthly and detail with you all in that regard as we go forward, and certainly at this point, we'll wrap it up in the interest of brevity, and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. At this time, does any council member have any concerns relative to property standards? Councilman Oliver Jacob.
Not relative to property standards, but I would like to have Terry come forward and talk to us a little bit about where we are with regard to the Coates, Bluff, and Ryan Companies, and if it's something that is not appropriate for public forum, then I'd like to schedule an executive session if that's what we need to do, because I'm getting a lot of feedback from the other end, and that's what I'm concerned about.
It's interesting that you would say that. We are at a point now where it is appropriate to have a discussion with you all about a proposal that has been put forward by one of the defendants in this matter. Our recommendation would be that you discuss it in an executive session and request that you do so, subject to your schedule. We had a status conference in the matter on last Tuesday or last Wednesday. As of right now, there are no other court proceedings or hearing dates scheduled, but the proposal that has been offered by one of the defendants, we believe, has merit and does warrant you all having a look at it and some further discussion about it. And there are some other things that I'll say to you all individually or in the executive session that I am not at liberty to say in an open meeting.
Let me ask two other, I guess, and you can tell me whether we can ask it. Is there some deadline today at 5:00 p.m.?
There is a, we received a letter from the attorney for the plaintiffs, Wright Island and the other, I can't remember the other plaintiff's name, but from the plaintiffs. And they asked that we respond to them by close of business today. Our attorney, the attorney that's representing the city, is Jennifer McKay, and she and I had a discussion earlier today where she was requested to contact Mr. Russell, who's the attorney that's representing the plaintiff, and let them know that there are seven of you all, and it's impossible for us to respond on their arbitrary deadlines, and so she was to contact them to request an extension.
Okay. And then one other question. Have the city or its representatives met with the plaintiffs since the trial?
Not outside of the trial, other than status conferences.
Okay. Got it. I mean, obviously, there's an issue just there alone, because the other side of this thing is nobody's talking to us.
Well, Mr. Jenkins, there's much more to it than that.
I'm sure there is much more.
That I would be more than happy to state in an executive session. What I will say, and probably shouldn't say it in this form, is that information that came to us, we were not at liberty and had not received the consent of the party proposing it to disclose until very, very recently. And that mitigated against having that meeting that you've talked about with the plaintiffs or anybody else that's involved in this litigation. So our efforts to try to do that have been stonewalled, if you will, because we had no consent to start that discussion and make some disclosures. Again, I'll provide more detail on that when we talk.
Terry, are we within an appropriate timeframe to have an executive session following tomorrow's meeting? Just because we don't have a particularly lengthy agenda, and I may have just cursed that. But again, could we do that, could we schedule one legally after the close of the meeting tomorrow?
We can. We have to post notice at least 24 hours in advance, so if we're going to do that, if you would give us an indication that that's what you all want to do, then...
Right now. I mean, we're all together tomorrow, is what I'm thinking.
I mean, I'm in favor, but that's just because I'm hearing it from the other end right now, and I'd like to hear both sides of the story, and I just, I think it would be helpful as well.
If you, if you're prepared...
We're prepared. We're prepared.
Post it.
Yeah, let's notice it up.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, is that going to post the, have the notice posted?
Yeah.
No, Mr. Thompson, I think we're going to do what we normally do, which is to send the information for the notice to the council office.
I'll call Annette, tell her it's coming.
All right.
Thank you, Terry.
Put on doing now. Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, five to eight days.
All right. No questions for Ms. Farnell at this time?
Let me speak to the...
We should receive our EMS report electronically.
Mr. James. Since Rose is not here, I think we have Ms. Let her come up and go home.
Sure. Ms. Houston?
Ms. Houston, why don't you come up? Where is Rose?
She was here. She may be a little bit...
She may be in the back.
It looks like her stuff. Ms. Houston, your council member is not here, but we're going, we want to hear your comments, and I know you've been able to talk to some of us and Ms. Farnell before the meeting started. If you would, please state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, if at all possible.
My name is Peggy Houston. I live at 1133 Ziegler Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am here to represent Ziegler Street. I have a problem with the house next door to me. I've been dealing with this problem for years. The house is rotting down, the ceiling has fallen in. When I open my door, it's the first thing that I have to look at. I cannot get anybody to do anything about this problem. I have problems with mice in my house, grass up, water washing down in my driveway, and I want to know what can I do, because I'm fed up with this. I have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on my property. My property is not worth anything. My insurance agent came out and said your property ain't worth nothing because of your surroundings, and I need something done about. They sent the property owner a letter. She had extension to January 2013 to do the repairs. She put a board on the back porch, a board on the side, put a board at the door. The locks is still on the porch from July the 17th, 2014, and I am fed up, and somebody have to do something about this problem.
Ms. Houston, would you do this? Many of us saw the photographs that you brought, and I think we can all agree there are some issues. Before you leave, would you make sure that Mr. Sibley has your contact information so that we can kind of have a meeting of the minds and find out who we may need to contact you? Make sure the appropriate person contacts you, and that you have a good understanding of what the city can do, if anything, and what might have to be privately. But if you would make sure that Mr. Sibley has your contact information, and I think that will be a good start to try to move this forward again.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Glover.
I'd like to ask for the council to give consideration as well, since we're going to convene an executive session tomorrow, to add to that list of items to be discussed, the EPA-DOJ matter regarding the sanitary sewer situation. We have some updates to provide there as well, and this will be very timely forward.
Okay. You hear it. Okay. I think tomorrow, we will have a master plan committee report, and we also have a public hearing scheduled tomorrow, Mr. Thompson.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Stating the renewal of the city of Shreveport's endorsement of the Genesis Construction Company LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Payment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Sibley, is there any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Well, not from the administration, but I noticed the clerk has noticed one on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we have ordinance number 71 is on the agenda. It should be removed tomorrow, and instead, the ordinance that is to be added, if you refresh, you'll see it. We will ask that you would do that. It would be a replacement for ordinance number 71.
Okay. I have no additional requests to speak at this time. Mr. Sibley?
Consent agenda legislation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I was trying to think of that word. I was multitasking, and it wasn't working.
This is to adopt ordinances and resolutions under the consent agenda. There are two resolutions. Number 104 authorizes James T. Smalley located at 1640 Wells Island Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport. This matter was previously postponed. And number 114 authorizes Anthony W. Daniels and Glenda located at 7473 Shirley Francis Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport. And, Mr. Chairman, we do have on 104, I think the council asked some questions, we have Ms. Featherson from Water and Sewer prepared to address the city's perspective on that situation, if that's appropriate at this time.
Sure.
And can we get some information on number 114 also? I just want to be sure we're being consistent with these decisions.
Yep. Because it looks like we're going across a lot.
Same to me.
And, Dale, I was telling Sam that that used to be your nickname, Mr. Consistent.
Where were you telling Sam that?
Just...
Sorry, Barbara. Go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. With regards to the connection on Wells Island Road, as you heard at council last meeting, the parish came up and talked about how the existing line loops back to the old analytical logging, and then comes back to Mr. Smalley's residence. And the questions, it's a long run of two-inch diameter pipe. The question with regards to if someone could possibly tie into that, whether we knew about it or not, really, there's no way for us to kind of, to watch those types of activities as that's how we kind of got there in the first place with all of this, with people connecting to something where we had no knowledge of that. There's no way for me to guarantee that someone's not going to connect to that line, at least not through a permitting, you know, through a permitting process. We could tell them, "No, going out in the middle of the night with a shovel and connecting up." We don't have any control over that, other than watching the amount on the bill to see if it's within reason or it changes significantly. And as you're aware, a lot of the connections that were discussed in 2011, when we had the drought issues with regards to piping, going extensive amount of footage through parish right-of-ways, that is a similar situation, and there would be some concerns there with having that amount of footage for just one service connection.
However, I received a call from a parish commissioner asking to give consideration to this case, kind of related to some of that conversation. Do we feel confident that this long line from the main to the residence, that it's in good shape? I mean, if we put aside the fact that other people may tap into it illegally, are we confident that this is a line we should be providing somebody water through?
We have no way of knowing that. We didn't know that before, when the connections were made. We have no way of knowing that now. There is a backflow preventer that protects the city's water system, and that would stay in place. And, you know, I think that the resident feels very comfortable with the line. It's been in service for quite some time. I'm not aware of any issues with the line. I think the parish has checked it out and feels fairly comfortable. I think the parish has checked it out and feels fairly comfortable with it. But from our perspective, it's a service line, and any issues with that line are not city responsibility. Our responsibility is to the meter.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Okay, but the meter is all the way back there on the main road or whatever, the 300 yards away or 400 yards away, right?
It's a good distance away. Yes, sir.
Okay, so anybody that taps in between that meter from the main, excuse me, to this guy's residence, in theory, would be the liability of the actual resident at that point.
It would be, however, um, we would, that would not be something that we would permit knowingly. And that's the same situation we were in before, is not knowing of the additional connections to that line.
Okay. And then I guess, so how is this gentleman getting water today?
I believe that that line is, is still in service at this point, and that was the, the position that the parish was making, was trying to get water to this gentleman, um, to continue to get water. The line has been in service, um, up until recently, when all of the other residences and businesses have either, have built wells, found other way to obtain potable water.
And let me say that differently, that how come he is, and what precipitated him to come here before us and request this at this point?
Because the parish, the meter is in the parish's name currently. The parish has been paying for the bills until this point in time. And they want to take the meter and put it in this, in this homeowner's name.
And Mr. Jenkins, apparently, if I recall from what Mr. Ward said, apparently, he is the only resident left that hasn't done a well or found another means of, of water. So it could be the parish only has one, and they're trying to kind of...
I, 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 their intent is, I mean, their motivation is, is pretty clear to me on this. That's a tough deal. And I guess from an, from the perspective of the manager of the water department for the city, and Mayor, I am happy if you interject at this point and say, I don't want you, Barbara, to be the burden of this response. Do you think this is in the best interest of the City of Shreveport to allow this to continue?
We are responsible up to the meter. And, and that's where our responsibilities lie. Obviously, we want to keep things within our ordinances and our regulations. We don't have any ordinances that would preclude a long service. There's nothing that would, you know, normally cause us not to do this. However, um, it is, obviously, there were issues in the past, and there are some concerns. But from a standpoint of what goes through that meter is going to be billed and will have to be paid for, the meter will be pulled.
And actually, really, I guess the long service line issue really came up two summers ago, more from a parish perspective than ours, is because they ask us not to allow
That's correct.
residents to run across multiple lots.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jenkins, if I may just extend Barbara's point, and Barbara correct me if I'm wrong, if other people tie in, uh, he's responsible for that bill. It doesn't get paid, then we have another situation where perhaps multiple folks being out of water.
And that's my, I mean, ultimately, he's going to say, yeah, I want the water line. He starts getting a $900, $1,000 water bill in mind. He's going to say, I shouldn't have to pay it. I mean, I just can say that's what's going to happen. And we're not going to, he's not going to say, well, I know I took responsibility for this, so I'm going to be paying this bill on behalf of my other nine people that tied in.
And I guess it's hard to tell from the map. We need to go to Google Earth or something. Are there other houses between him and the water line? Is that kind of just vacant land?
It's vacant land.
Similar questions about the other agenda item? Councilman Sam Jenkins, you got it?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. 7473 Shirley Francis.
I don't have the information on that one.
Ali, Ali, thanks, thanks, Barbara.
Thanks, Barbara.
This is on number 114, now.
Correct. Are we once again running a line across another lot in order to get to the water main?
Not in this case. This lot that shows the three lots, if you look at your map, there's like three small lots in there. It's owned by one individual. He's an older fellow. He moved out to a nursing home, and he gave his three kids these three lots to build houses. He already have water in one of them. His, uh, one of the sons build a ha, building a house in the next one. And he was going to hook up to his dad's line, and we told him, no, you need to apply and get your own line, your own meter, and petition to get in there instead of hooking up, instead of having one service serving two houses.
So the lots are individual? They're just all within the same family?
It is. The same, he still owns it. The dad still owns him. And he's deeding like one-third of the lot to each one. He has two, two sons and a daughter.
And 7473 has road access how?
He, he has, uh, across his brother's lot. It's all one, one property.
He's landlocked, but he has a right of way or something?
Yeah, yeah, it's his brother. They, they are all one family.
Because I'm in another lawsuit on the same issue, huh? Yes, outside of this. But if you landlock yourself, you don't get permanent access.
Can, can I go back to Wells Island and explain something, because I'm very familiar with that situation? As you are aware of Wells Island, it, it was multi-services from the industry that was in there. Since then, the parish took the bull by the horn because of all the problems they had in that area. Some people are will enough. They can drill well. So the parish, in the last six months, they have put a meter in there, and they served all the individuals, commercial and residential, that we, that were being served by this line. Now, everybody in the last six months, because it was a grace period, we told them after six months, we're going to cut it off. So everybody now, they dug their own well and made their own accommodations to get water for their own entities, except one individual, who's probably in fixed income and the poorest person in that whole area. So the parish don't want to leave him out, since everybody's been taken care of. So the parish has been working with this individual, and they ask what they need to do to keep him with water service, since he can't afford to dig a well. So we told them the best thing really to do, go in there, inspect this line, and make sure everything that has been connected to it to be cut unplugged. And he's the only one that has service from that line. The parish did about two, three weeks ago, before they asked him to sign a petition. They went in there and they hired a plumber, and they went in there and they surveyed that line. And Ken Ward is here. He, he was the project manager with the parish that did all the work in there. They spent about $3,500 locating the line, inspecting it, making sure it's in good condition, and they would be able to provide service to this individual. And that's when we asked them to get that individual to be able to tie into water. We asked him to do a petition so he can tie into the water. So Mr. Smalley submitted a petition asking us to allow him to tie into the water. The meter, as Barbara explained and Ken, it's right close to our meter, and it's protected by backflow preventer. According to the parish plumber's report, they said the line is in good condition to serve that property in there. And they don't have a problem with the line being in the right of way, serving that individual. And based in Ken's, he assured us the parish is going to continue to monitor this line to make sure nobody hooks up to it. And if somebody hooks up to it, they're going to interfere and go in there and make sure this doesn't happen.
By the way, the parish has an offer to keep it in their name, though, I'm guessing.
They, they are not in business to keep water meters in their name. But they are willing, but they are willing to do whatever it takes to ensure that line is protected and nobody hooked up to it.
But that's a little bit different from my question, but I got it.
The parish don't want to keep the meter in their name now. They're trying to get out from under keeping the meter in their name.
Thanks, Ali.
All right. Mr. Sibley, let's go ahead to resolutions on the second reading and final passage.
Start with number 81, states the renewal of the City of Shreveport's endorsement of the Genesis Construction Company, LLC, to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program, and to otherwise provide with respect there to this matter was previously postponed. Hold on, Ms. Matt?
Oh, not yet?
Please?
I'm sorry. Go ahead of myself.
Number 94 authorizes execution of a retainer agreement with Ronald F. Lutier, attorney of law, ratifying any and all work previously performed. This matter was previously postponed on June 11, 2013. Number 101 selects the Times as the official journal for the City of Shreveport for the period commencing July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, and otherwise providing with respect there to this matter was previously postponed. Number 105 ratifies the use of certain equipment by Urban Support Agency. Number 106 requests the Metropolitan Planning Commission to review and to recommend appropriate amendments to the future land use policy map prior to the adoption of the Shreveport Cato Unified Development Code. Number 107 repeals resolution number 239 of 2010. Number 108 authorizes the mayor to execute an act of release of a retained servitude located in the closed and abandoned right of way of Ashton Street and Looney Street in the Winestock, RJ Looney, and Cleveland subdivisions. Number 109 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus. Number 110 declares certain adjudicated property to be surplus, which will authorize the mayor to sell the City of Shreveport's tax interests in these adjudicated properties. Number 111 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages, and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for properties located at 1207, 1205, and 1303 Shreveport-Marsdale Highway for an Independence Day celebration. Number 112 suspends the effects of Section 10-190 and 10-192, and Section 62-65A of the City of Shreveport's Code of Ordnances relative to the Robinsons Rescue. And number 113 urges and requests the MPC and ZBA to amend their bylaws to require electronic voting.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Tomorrow, I'm going to request
Ms. Matt?
to have 112, or excuse me, 111 removed. The proprietors have changed their plan on that, and it's no longer necessary. And then question for our clerk on 101. Do most of, the significant part of our bills with regard to the times fall on that first legals in the classified section?
I think the answer to it is yes, but the legals in the classified section, legals in the retail section, those are the two that the state statute require us, those, that's what we are required to do under the state statute, and that's where they put a maximum on the amount that can be charged. And those, so we have more control, well, we have more to say about that than we do about the, the others that are more discretionary.
Okay, and then, based on what we current, what does it normally cost us, I mean, rough order of magnitude a year?
Well, we spend, I think the number is about $90,000, but that's for all of the advertising for the city, including the minutes and the other advertising that we are required to do. So I don't have a breakdown on what it is just at this time. I probably can get it by tomorrow.
I mean, I'm just...
On what it is for the minutes, which would be the first section, the 21 to 27.
10% increase.
And now it's been, if you see, it's been reduced
Yes.
to 23.
So it's essentially a 10% increase on the minutes, is the way I read it. And then about a 3% increase on the advertising part of it, is what, I mean, global.
You're better at math than I am, but I assume that's...
Okay. And I'm just curious to know, all in, that it's going to cost us another 10 grand a year, or is that going to cost us another 1,000?
I'll see if I can get the answer to that. Of course, um, you know, the council could, um, alter the way some business is done to reduce it.
Understood. I'm just, I'm assuming you did a great job of negotiating, and this is their bottom line, so here we are.
Councilman Sam Jenkins?
Mr. Chairman, on number 106, I'm asking Ms. Sanders to come forward. This was a resolution coming forward. I know we're preparing, uh, to compile our Unified Development Code, and there are some, uh, aspects of the master plan that deals with future land, uh, future land use. And, uh, I'm thinking this may be a good time to visit that issue and just see if any changes need to be recommended between the time of the master plans and the time that the UDC is developed. Can you give us a little, uh, after you clear your throat, stop choking, can you give us a little?
Yes, sir.
Who would be involved with that?
Sure, just for the benefit of the public, you know, the, the future land use map is basically a, a policy guide to the elected and appointed, um, officials as they make decisions about things like zoning. So, you know, basically, this map recommends the way in which a property within the planning area should be used in order to implement the master plan. And the Unified Development Code will actually be working to implement this future land use map. So, um, the MPC certainly understands the, the logic for the request. Um, and we will be looking forward to assist the council in their decision on this matter.
I'd rather, can you explain to me a little bit more about the intent? Or the impetus, at least.
Yeah, let me give, let me give an example. Say, for instance, if you go to the future land use map, you're looking West Shreveport, you know, you're looking mostly at land use for residential and agriculture. Uh, you know, there could be some concerns there that we need some properties designated that would be more available for economic development, or business use, or industrial uses, or things along those lines. We like for some of those things to be looked at at this stage, uh, as opposed to when we're preparing to maybe have a developer or someone come in and decide that they want to do something in that area. We're going to go through all these rezoning issues. So it's just, at this point, it'd just be a matter of them reviewing it and, and seeing if any of those future land use recommendations that were made with the master plan need to be modified in any way.
Maybe don't reflect what the area...
Absolutely, right. And just come back and give us some recommendations on it. I mean, nothing is going to be implemented in this council, yeah.
Fairly general, kind of big picture look, is that what you're saying?
Basically, what I get from, from this request is that the MPC is, is being requested to take a look at that future land use map one more time, look for consistencies with the goals and recommendations of the other aspects of the master plan. Um, I see it specifically refers to, uh, recommended actions of the plan for directing 50% of new households to be located inside the loop, and focusing growth in compact neighborhood centers or urban villages, especially outside the loop, which would actually, you know, refers to what Councilman Jenkins was just discussing.
Because every west Shreveport is outside the loop.
Because the, the future land use map is intended to be implemented in part by the Unified Development Code, I think staff, um, envisions the process to sort of fold into the Unified Development Code process, just using some of those public meetings to reach out to the citizens and get some feedback on that map.
And they just send back recommendations at this point, if any.
Right.
Uh, because nothing will be implemented until this body or the parish, you know, takes some formal action on it. But it'd be a good idea to look at it at this age.
Sure. We'll be bringing this to the MPC board at their meeting next week, getting some feedback from them, some direction, uh, from, from the board in response to this request. But like I said, it's, it's, um, it's our anticipation that staff will be able to assist the council in, in carrying out this request.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
While I got the floor, I wanted to ask about another one, if no one, no one had anything on, anything else on it? Number, I'm sorry, did you have something on number 106?
None on that one, no.
Number 108, I'm, I'm trying to get a good understanding of what is occurring now. This appears to be associated with the Renaissance, uh, development. And, uh, I, I see it's talking about abandoning some street right of ways.
Mr. Jenkins, we have Malcolm from Property Management who can speak to that.
At least we do this ahead of time before we start building.
Yeah, right, and that's, I just wanted to get a...
That's a positive.
Get a good idea. This, this, this is not improved roadway of Looney and Ashton?
No, sir. These were two roadways that were closed and abandoned many, many years ago. And there were retained servitudes there for utility servitudes. And what this is doing is, and those servitudes were not released, they remained, they were kept. So what this resolution does is authorize the mayor to sign a release of those servitudes where they go away. And they're, that's, so the Renaissance development can be built on top of them.
Gotcha, all right. Thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Um, one thing, number 107, though it says G. S. Jenkins, I believe it's C. O. Jenkins. And not that it really matters.
Which number was that?
107, but that's more for B than anybody. It's not, it's nothing significant. I just say that just so. And then, and then 113, it's under your name. Can you just tell me?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I'm sorry, it's not linked on there.
Well, part of it is... Well, part of it is to, I mean, there's-
Now it is. Now it's showing up linked. I just had to refresh my. So what happened recently during, and I cannot remember if it was a ZBA or an MPC meeting, but there was a hand vote that was taken that was tallied incorrectly, and it brought it to the attention of several of us that while they have the voting system available to us, the way both the commission and us use the electronic voting system, that for accuracy of records, we recommend that they use the electronic voting system as well, so that they don't run into any other problems like that.
We don't have to request them to do a study of it first, do we?
No, I think, I think we-
More make sure.
I think we can just ask them to do it. And hopefully, they don't object. I think it's just encouraging them to do so.
Number 81, there is a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow, but there's staff here from Community Development in case the council had any questions today. If not, I'd like to release them to go ahead and be free to get back to their desk.
Just letting everybody know about it real quick. I mean, I think we discussed this a few weeks ago, but this is one of those that has to sit on the agenda for a while, so it's been on there a few weeks. So if it's not fresh in your mind, you know, I think it might be good to just have a little recap of what it is.
Okay. It is a RTA, Restoration Tax Abatement, application by Mr. James Lesser of Regenesis Construction Corp., um, Company. They submitted a RTA application initially back in 2008, and that was approved by the council, and they're submitting a renewal of that. I believe this year, the total cost of the project is $432,000. The project is at $432,000. It was a complete renovation of the property at 219 Fannin Street downtown, it's in the DDA. And they essentially gutted it. They did a new roof, they did all electrical and plumbing, they did, they put in a new sewer, I believe. And the space is about 20, no, excuse me, 12,000 square feet, two levels, so 6,000 on each, on each level. And it's meant to house their business, which I believe two businesses are housed there, and then the upstairs is the residence. So it has warehouse space, equipment, equipment space, business space, office space, and then their residence at the top.
Is that the place where Mr. Lester lives in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has the parish already signed off on this?
I'm unaware of whether they've signed off on it or not. We have sent them a notice of our, our decision to move it forward to council. Outside of that, I can't speak to what their position is.
So is everybody familiar with the RTA program? I know that it doesn't apply all over the city, and it applies in a lot of my districts, so I didn't know if everybody was familiar with it. But Restoration Tax Abatement is where you take the, you freeze the value of the building before the restoration work goes into it. And it's for an initial period of five years, and has an optional five-year extension. This is that five-year extension. So-
They just paid a tax on that pre-restoration?
Correct.
They continue to pay the pre-restoration value. It's one, it's an incentive we use to get people to redevelop buildings that have been unoccupied for a while.
And this chairman, members of the council, if I might add, it's an excellent example of the type of activity that we want to see more of in downtown Shreveport. I know at one point, Councilman Everson, it was on the downtown tour of homes. I'm not sure if it was on this year, but-
I think it was on at least two years there.
Right.
You know, it looks great. If y'all haven't seen the building, it really does.
They're quite proud of the property.
I think this is really a good deal for the city.
Unfortunately.
You know, if, if we hadn't had this incentive available to entice them to do this work, the building would be probably crumbling by now, you know. So, yeah, no, it's, they've done a good job with it.
I can certainly tell you more about that story tomorrow.
What's that?
I can certainly tell you more about that story tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ma'am. We'll do it again at the hearing tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Sibley, let's proceed with introduction of resolutions.
These are resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 9, 2013. Number 115 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute grant documents with the U.S. Department of Justice. Number 116 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Southern Trace for the private water and sewer improvements for Southern Trace Phase 5, Section 27, and related facilities. Number 117 authorizes the Shreveport Police Department to accept a donation of Celebrite Universal Forensic Extraction Device valued at $10,084 from Red Ball Oxygen Company Incorporated. Number 118 authorizes the execution of a state entity lighting maintenance agreement with the Department of Transportation and Development in regard to a roadway and interchange lighting system project on Segment K of the I-49 project. Number 119 declares the city of Ostrava, Czech Republic, as a sister city of the city of Shreveport, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the city of Ostrava, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor Glover?
I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Huddleston or Bill Gooden to come up and give you guys just a very quick, uh, quick and dirty on 117.
That'd be great. A forensic extraction device isn't something I use daily. It sounds great, but I don't know what it is.
I think we can answer that. Good afternoon. What that is, it's a device that allows us to extract deleted data from cell phones in investigations, particularly along the lines of sex crimes. However, what we found is that investigations into homicides, robberies, this, a device similar to this has been instrumental in us actually apprehending or gaining enough evidence to establish probable cause to arrest the offender. Now, the Bosier City Marshal has a similar device, but due to the increased demand, we find that we often have a wait time there. So this is really going to be a boon to our department as we move forward into this technological age that we're in, in identifying and apprehending the suspects in those kind of cases.
Very cool.
And, and Red Ball, did they, y'all sought them out as a partner, or they just sort of used them for other aspects of their business?
One of our sex crimes detectives, Detective Alday, he was the point of contact there, and I'm not sure the exact specifics, if he knows someone there or was involved in some other way with a conversation with the folks at Red Ball.
That's really generous of him. That's great. That's really good.
It's going to be a good tool for us to use, as, again, these investigations are becoming much more common, and we need to get that data out of cell phones.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, just an additional bit of background, the folks at Red Ball have a decades-long history of helping to support law enforcement efforts, both for Shreveport and for Caddo Parish, dating back to the late 80s, with Mr. Craig Kennedy, who was the founder of Red Ball. That tradition is carried on by his son Garrett. In fact, I think there was also a recent cooperative effort between Red Ball and, I believe, the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office for a license plate detection-
Correct, yes, sir.
-piece of equipment that allows them to be able to just simply scan the drivers, the license plates of vehicles as they traverse down a road or through a parking lot or what have you, automatically takes that information, processes it, and flags it if it represents a vehicle that is being pursued for, you know, stolen, as of, it may be a subject of an Amber warning or some, or alert or what have you. And just by that detection, is they able to, to be able to draw that in, process it, and make that particular officer aware that you need to go after that particular vehicle. So going back to, again, their early years in the late 80s, early 90s, all the way forward, they have been proactively organizing themselves in what was, at that time, referred to as the Agers Business Association, is now the North Shreveport Business Association. And whenever they find an opportunity where they can partner with law enforcement, either for the city or with the sheriff's office, they always step forward and help to make that happen. So in the previous years, they provided dollars and assisted, I think, with the K-9 operations. They've also assisted with the acquisition of bulletproof vests.
I think they bought some of our first bulletproof vests many, many years ago.
Yeah, in fact, I think I remember that.
Right. You've been in elementary school, but you remember.
But they've been a great-
Years ago, I remember them buying another installment of them at some point.
They've been a great-
I may not remember the first, but-
It's been years ago.
It would have been the late 80s. It would have been the late 80s, early 90s.
Could have been in middle school by then. It might have been a cater middle magnet. At that point, I-
That might have been a part of a civic.
It could have been. It could have been. Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And 119, Oliver, is that one of the cities that you flew over when, when you were flying and, and you made stuff?
I have, I have to tell you that I've, I've done a little research to see if I've actually flown over that part of the Czech Republic. And the answer is no, I have not.
Oh, okay.
But I've flown mighty close to it a couple times. We had some, in those days when I was over there, we had some countries we could fly over and some we couldn't. That wasn't one of the green-lighted ones.
Mr. Chairman, council right in line with that. I want to express appreciation to Councilman Oliver Jenkins and Rod Richardson from the mayor's office. They have been kind of the two-point folks in helping to, to advance this effort forward. If you will remember, I believe it was probably just about a year or so ago, Mr. Webb, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Jenkins, that we had a delegation of folks who came to visit this area from Ostrava. They also spent time at Barsdale Air Force Base as well, and there's been discussion back and forth over that time period about developing a sister city relationship with them. We think that there are some very definite parallels between Shreveport and Ostrava. Ostrava happens to be the third largest city in the Czech Republic, in similar fashion to Shreveport, being the third largest city in the state of Louisiana. Our history is in the oil and gas field. Much of their history is grounded in the coal industry. They have made some significant transitions in the last few years into other areas that also parallel a great deal with what we're doing here in northwest Louisiana. So we look forward to the opportunity. I think it has the potential to be mutually beneficial.
Didn't we, did we, and this is just my memory being lapsed, but didn't we pass something declaring something similar to this already, or no, or?
Not this one.
I thought we did.
I don't think so.
We, we, I've asked them to look at this, and they say we never formally did anything.
Okay. I just, I guess I remember it being on our agenda, and we discussed it at-
You may remember the group themselves being here, because-
And I remember them being here, and they-
Some of us sat through a presentation and award ceremony with them.
And they brought some, some cool little, you know, books and things about their country, I mean, about their city. And, yeah, yeah, I remember it very well, but I guess I just thought that we, we just sounded too familiar. I felt, I felt like we'd done it already, but I guess not. Glad to do it now. I just thought, you know, I just thought I remembered doing it already.
But it does take two reader for this, though.
It's authorizing a contract. Oh, right.
Okay. And then the other question, just the state lighting maintenance agreement, can y'all just give a little bit more background on that?
Stan?
The DOTD.
It's a, a sign of progress.
Looks like we're getting some lights up, huh?
Hopefully, there's a road underneath us.
It will. It'll be the section, I believe, if I'm not wrong, that connects from Highway 1 into MLK Drive.
Yeah, it's, it's a section from 220 to Martin Luther King Drive. And so this is, this basically the, is consistent with the previous agreements that we had with them. They construct the lights, and we maintain them, basically. And this is for that new section, again, from, it's on I-49, it's from I-220 down to Martin Luther King Drive.
I stand corrected, council members, that's actually the last segment. J is the segment between Highway 1 and MLK Drive, and this is, this will be the, the mix master that connects all of it together.
Excellent. Thank you, Stan.
Okay.
Also add, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is being designed with input from the local arts community as well. I think, as I've mentioned to you all on several occasions, part of what we have endeavored to do is to try and allow these urbanized portions of 49 to take on some of the characteristics that are more familiar to folks who drive through Texas and other cities, who have taken opportunities to work towards making their interstate systems more aesthetically pleasing, a little less industrial-looking, so we don't end up with another example like I-20 and I-49 right now, where we've had a great opportunity there, but unfortunately, didn't take advantage of it. We hope to not make that same mistake with this portion of interstate coming through.
That would be great. Sibley, let's proceed with introduction of ordinances.
These are ordinances not to be adopted prior to July 9, 2013. Number 67 amends and reenacts certain provisions of Section 30-201 and 30-203 of the Code of Ordinances relative to fire prevention and protection, Article 8, limited access gates. Number 68 closes and abandons the 20-foot wide alley between Common and Douglas Streets and between Caddo and Fannin in the 10-acre Lot 2 subdivision located in Section 37, 18 North, 14 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Number 69 declares the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the Murphy Street Park project. Number 70 amends the 2013 general fund budget. This is regarding SPAR's equipment repair and maintenance. Number 71, zoning matter C-3713, an application by the MPC to hold a public hearing regarding an amendment to, to significantly restrict the locations where factory-built homes of any types may be placed without specific forms of approval. Number 72, zoning matter C-5013, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Yuri Drive and Ardmore Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from SPI E B 1 Highland Urban Conservation Buffer Business Extended Use District to SPI E B 1 Highland Urban Conservation Buffer Business Extended Use District to add a dog grooming salon. Number 73 is zoning matter C-5313. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances for continuation of the R2E SPI 2 Urban One-Family Residence Extended Use District, limited to a motel only, on property located on the southeast corner of Lewis Lane and California Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana.
Any questions? Mr. Jenkins, just before you say that, Oliver, you're not trying to ease in a dog park over, are you?
I'm not. It's grooming, not rooming. It's grooming. He started doing this.
I see it is, it's grooming. I thought it was rooming. Mr. Sibley, I thought you said rooming.
Oh, did I read that wrong, Mr.?
Instead of grooming. Okay, Sam, I wanted to say something.
Yeah. Number 73, I think it should be, should be G, or S Jenkins. Number 73, it shouldn't be G, it should be S Jenkins. And then, number 68, I'd just like a little clarification of what I mean.
This is the Family Dollar site that, that we talked about a few months back. There is some, some ownership issues, if I recall right now. I didn't draft this. I think it was drafted with my name, and I'm fine with that, but-
It's talking about street closures.
Yeah, it's, it's an alleyway in there. They're trying to close off a portion of the alleyway.
And it actually works better for us as a city because of the way they laid out their parking and everything. Otherwise, their initial situation would have had us with a, a public street going in the middle of a private development.
Which we would have had to maintain and be responsible for.
This actually works better for the city.
Allows us better access and keeps it cleaner.
What's going in there?
It's just an abandoned, it's an abandoned alley. Is that what I'm hearing there?
Yes.
It's not, it's not-
Undeveloped, right.
Downtown?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins?
Okay. And I think y'all may have talked about, I don't know. I'd like a refresher on 69. So for 69, we have budgeted, how much did we budget in this capital project?
I believe it was about $220,000.
Was budgeted in the project?
I believe so.
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so.
And then how much does it cost for the acquisition of these, or is this what we're doing, is you can spend up to that amount to buy these three parcels?
This is, these are being appropriated. Let me ask Malcolm to come up and speak to the cost.
Okay, so they're being, that's what my question is.
Yes, sir. These three.
Okay. So we're not, so what says finances, we're not expending that amount of money for, okay. That's, that answers my question.
No. There's no lots down there worth $220,000.
I'm not saying, you can say that, I'm not saying that. But the way I read it, the cost of these parcels, well, now I see that, minimal. So small, we didn't even want to justify a number.
Let's get your opinion, Malcolm.
Yeah, I put minimal in the proposed ordinance. Filing fees, I think, is about all it's going to cost.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, no acquis, no property acquisition cost for this, and we're seizing these properties, these are adjudicated properties, we're seizing them under, under the seizure ordinance.
Okay, got it, that answers my question.
But, so, under seizure, if somebody, do they still have a time period in which to object?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and...
Very similar to the property over on Cotton Street.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, so, no, I mean, that's, how long is their, they just have a six-month window or something? It's not like a full redemption period, like if it was a...
It depends on if the property has been adjudicated for...
Five years.
Over five years, then it's a 60-day redemption period. If it's been adjudicated for three years, but not more than five, it's a 180-day redemption period.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
And for the record, I'm glad, Malton, it's a seizure, not an expropriation.
Yeah, seizure, not expropriation.
Right, thank you, Malton.
Any more discussion? Mr. Sibley, let's proceed with ordinances of second reading and final passage.
Number 8911.
8911?
Is an, is an ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 74 of the Code of Ordinances relative to solid waste collections. This matter has been previously postponed. Number 52 amends the 2013 budget for the Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund. This matter is vetoed June 17, 2013, and returned to the agenda. Number 60 amends the 2013 capital improvements budget. This is regarding the airfield drainage rehabilitation project. Number 61 amends the 2013 budget for the water and sewage fund budget. Number 62 amends and reenacts Section 10-190 of the Code of Ordinances relative to drinking in public. Number 63, an ordinance amending the 2013 capital improvements budget. Number 64, an ordinance amending the 2013 streets special revenue fund budget. Number 65, an ordinance amending the 2013 streets special revenue fund budget. And number 66, an ordinance amending the 2013 general fund appropriating the funds authorized therein.
Any discussion? All righty then.
That concludes the legislation, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, any table is not here. Mr. Sibley, are you aware of any table legislation coming?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Get rid of ordinance 41, ordinance number 25.
Yeah, we can get rid of that. Yeah, okay.
And, by the way, ordinance number 205, do y'all intend to take that off the table and vote it, and remove it?
Yeah, it's a CEDO ordinance.
I mean, I just say that because y'all meant, it doesn't have to be this week, but...
I think, I think at some point, especially once we would ask that the council review and then take action on CEDO, that it would be appropriate to remove it.
All right, I believe that brings us down to property standards appeals. Mr. Farnell. Left with Mr. Thompson.
I have something while you're waiting for her to return. Dale, and this is a little bit of Dale and Shelley here. Piermont Road, between the bayou and, let's say, Yuri, that area, first of all, the median needs to be, and I, it could be, I don't know if it's, it's not you, it's...
Stan.
That definitely is, it's got fairly, it's knee-high, at least, on the grass, on the median, maybe even, right?
That's Piermont between the bayou and Yuri.
Between the bayou, maybe all the way past Piermont, but they have a pretty extensive median there that needs...
Pretty much burned, go check it.
And then, apparently, all the lights in there from Fern to Yuri are also burned out, and several residents have called to get those replaced, and no action to date.
I will say that on, I live on a street that has a median, and the best tip I can give, the best luck I've had, is to go on Swepco's website, and there's, there should be a number on those poles, and type those numbers in. It's kind of like, you know how, because I call in, too, and obviously, you know, they're responsive, but for whatever reason, you know how different organizations have different tracking systems that work best for them, that online seems to get them to change those bulbs fastest, and especially in the median.
Okay, good results with that, of course.
Yeah, I've done it on a one, a one-off, but when it's...
Well, ours are, you know, I think ours are a little unusual, too, because it's, they're real old, they're like these historic-looking lights.
You're in that high-end neighborhood.
But we have both those notes, Mr. Jenkins will...
But, but they get to it pretty fast that way. Although, I will say, my median is also waist-deep, probably. It's, it's a little tall. Fast grass, so it grows season.
Mr. Chairman, I think, as both Councilmen Everson and Dale was just referencing, we'll work on both ends with regard to the Swepco light pole issue, but I'm glad you made reference to the, the median issue, Mr. Jenkins and members of the council, because, you know, that is an issue and a challenge that we're facing all across the entirety of the city. And as Stan just did while he was, while you were asking the question, he pointed to himself because he knows that that's one of the duties and responsibilities for, and you're good, Sam, for streets and drainage, and the Department of Public Works as a whole. And unfortunately, it represents one of those areas that, from a budgetary standpoint, we have not allocated resources as we have in decades past, and certainly not within the last four to five years. It also hopefully represents one of those areas, now that we're going to be ending our contract with the, the city of Bossier for garbage collection, that hopefully, and obviously, right now at this point, as we're leading up towards the administration's end of budget preparation for 2014, that's one of the considerations that I'm asking them to, to make as they begin to pull those numbers together, because one of the things that I want us to be able to do going into 2014 is take advantage of this opportunity. Despite the fact that we've got declining revenues from a sales tax standpoint and some of our other areas, we need to figure out a way to improve the quality of the curb appeal of the city of Shreveport. We've done a, a very good job over the last six years or so, dedicating more resources towards Operation T-Bone and other things that focus on property standards issues like Dorothy's responsible for, but we've done a, a poor job of, of having resources sufficiently available to be able to address those areas that are our direct responsibility, and those are medians and curbs and what have you all across Shreveport. And so, the area that Mr. Jenkins just referenced, I was complaining to Dale about the, the status of Pond Road, as I drove down it this past weekend, and then even in some areas that Shelley's responsible for, like SPAR. I was over at the city court building on, on Friday, and was tempted to call Dorothy and tell her to come cite us for property standards violation. So, all of those areas that I want to see us do better in, and we look forward to working with you guys to see how we get there.
Chairman, Mr. May, I, I usually tell them that, because we've had so much rain and so much heat, the grass has a tendency to grow, you know, a whole lot quicker than on a normal condition, so, some of them, because I know, like, down Hollywood Avenue that comes right from the airport, right down to the city, and I've had two or three calls, you know, Joe, that's a shame, y'all won't keep this, you know, you won't keep this cut. I said, well, you know, we, we cut it one week, and next week it's right back because we've had rain and heat and, 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 you know, and that kind of stuff, because it has some logic to it, you know, because we have, we've just had, we've had more rain this year than I believe we've had in the last, what, five or six years at this time.
Don't say that with too much enthusiasm, because that, that cuts down on the revenue for that young lady back there with the salmon-colored blouse on.
Yeah.
We, we, we need a few dry days to run those, run, run those water sprinklers.
That's true, but it's, it's been, I mean, it's raining, it's just been coming down and, and, what was it, last Wednesday? I mean, it just seemed like it was just coming down in buckets.
Chairman, Ms. Farnell is ready. Dorothy, if you're still with us.
Good afternoon. My first case that I have today is in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' area. It is 140 Pennsylvania Street. Ms. Powell is present. They have made significant improvements on the structure. The backside of the structure still is in need of repair. They've asked for 90 days to complete it. I have no objection, and they are here to speak to the council.
Hello. Let me just say first, I do appreciate the progress to date, though, in the last six to eight months, we have not had much progress, you notice. And I'm certainly going to put a motion forward to extend you the 90 days as requested. But I will say that, from my perspective, I would appreciate a better response in this when Ms. Farnell attempts to contact you on stuff, because this has been, we've had, what, three of these scheduled, and I don't believe she's ever been able to contact. That doesn't mean I'm not excited about being done with this, I just would like you to be a little more responsive.
I believe that the notices were going to my mother's former house at 240 Roma. They weren't coming to 140 Pennsylvania where we were living, they were going to another house.
But, I do know she was calling on the cell phone and some other things, so, I mean, we're just trying to move forward with this project as soon as possible, and we'd love it if you really could dedicate some effort to this, so we could have it done in about nine. Because we've been on it, I mean, it's more than three years already, so, three and a half years. And I'm not saying that I'm not, I mean, the appeal from the street is fantastic, done a great job, now just fixing the back would be great.
Okay.
And just make sure that Ms. Farnell has all the up-to-date contact info.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for a 90-day extension.
Motion by Councilman, Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins for 90-day extension.
September 23.
And that is six yes, one out of the chamber.
Thank you.
Oliver, you, you should have made it on the 29th, that was my birthday, so...
Dropping a hint?
I mean, I'm glad you're still counting my days.
Who was that chuckling?
Art sends me that joke.
Wait.
Please, Dorothy.
Okay, our next case is in Councilman Sam Jenkins' area. It's 2837 Logan Street. This is a property wherein it was burned, the owners have tried to rehab it, they've done significant amount of work, they've replaced and repaired a lot of the things that we have requested. Mr. Henry is here from Dallas, Texas, he's driven in and would like to address the board. They're requesting 90 days, so, he's here. I would like to address you.
Thank you.
All right.
As you said, we have been trying to do this on our own, but we've run into some complications with weather, and then we have, have my brother-in-law, which has been doing our major work, but it's just, it comes to, the funds have just kind of, we've kind of ran out of funds, so we're taking another course, and we're going to try to make a loan on the, get a loan to, to handle the situation. So, I feel like, within the 90 days, we should definitely be able to have everything under control.
I did talk with members of the family, they related the same thing to me. Once again, just, if we could stay in communication with Ms. Farnell, she has a job to do, and keep her posted on what we're doing. Ms. Farnell, I was going to go far with the 90-day extension unless you had something...
I'm fine with the 90 days, as I told them. If they, if they get the funds to proceed with work, I'll be happy to extend the permit, and we'll come back, monitor it, and see where they are, and can continue with it. So, I'm fine with that.
All right, so move for 90 days.
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins for 90-day extension.
September 23 also.
And that is six yes, one out of the chamber.
Birthday gifts.
Our next case is in Councilman Corbin's area, 744 Peters Boulevard. It was a demolition from a burned structure. I would ask that the case be closed because the owner's in full compliance of the demolition and the removal.
Motion to second, close the case. Motion by the chair, seconded by the vice chair. Please say. Six yes, one out of the chamber.
Oh, because, was it demolished, is what was that?
He demolished it, yes, it was a demolition.
I got you. I was like, well, it's not there anymore.
Take care of things in District D.
I can see how they handle things down in District D.
Our next case is in Councilman Shine's area.
History, yeah, there's...
Three.
Did we pass the motion?
What's, what's, what's your, what's your recommendation?
I asked that the case be closed, he's in full compliance, 744 St. Peters.
He's in what now?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we did, we, we...
Okay.
Step ahead of us.
357 West 80th Street. This is Mr. Benny Washington, this was a care premise, Mr. Washington is not here. He promised that he was going to have this done in 45 days. The trash and debris is still there, Mr. Shine. I would ask that you would uphold the, I would ask that you would hold the order for the, for Property Standards Board.
So be it.
Has she done any work at all in the 45?
No, it's still, the trash and debris is still there.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Shine, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Please say. Yes, one out of the chamber.
That's all the cases that I have. Yes, sir.
Before she leaves, I'd like to bring up a matter. Our office received an email from Ms. McCullough asking that a matter be put back on the agenda is HBO 130024. The applicant is Larry Bach Jr. My recollection is that at the last meeting, the council upheld the board's decision to demolish this property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I don't know of any avenue, any rules that we have to get it back on the agenda, and I guess I'm asking for directions from this body as to what do I do as it relates to this request from one of your members.
Wouldn't the next move be for the property owner to go to court?
Correct.
I think we're bound by that.
I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
Did Ms. McCullough mention why?
I did not talk, well, here's what the email says. He has received a 30-day demolition letter and has two dumpsters that need to be dumped, but he needs a permit to do so.
And he needs to contact us?
Need a permit to dump dumpsters?
Do you have any comments on that? I mean, I don't know.
Is that so?
As, when we, when I researched this, I found that the, as Ms. McCullough had said, that it was going to change hands to a new owner, it did not. I talked with him, there was problem with the insurance and the mortgage. There was no change in ownership in the conveyance records. Therefore, what happens is, when the ownership changes, then we will issue a 10-day letter to the new owner, asking him to file an appeal with the city council. That has not occurred. We will do a final research on the ownership of this property prior to demolition, once the 30 days have expired for him to file with First JDC. At that point, we will notify, we will do a research. If the ownership has not changed, we will proceed. If it has changed, we will give him 10 days to respond and file an appeal with city council.
Did I, did I misunderstand what Art said? Ask him for a permit to dump a dumpster?
That's what the email says. I guess he's tearing it down himself, is that it?
See, I haven't, I haven't had any communications with the owner, except for him to tell me that there was problem in the conveyance of it.
Because the last time, it was the new owners that were here, right?
Right, but that did not, but that, the conveyance did not occur. Right, but that did not, but that, the conveyance did not occur.
Those people that said they were the new owner, they really were not.
They were not.
Not as far as the public record is concerned, is what you're saying, to turn, check into the conveyance records.
Correct.
The reason I brought it up is, I've been asked to do something, and I don't know what vehicle I could use to get it done, and I thought that unless the council wanted to amend the rules or suspend the rules or something, I mean, I don't know of any way to get it on the agenda.
He's got a, he's got an appeal, an appeal period that's running for District Court. I'd be a little concerned with interfering with that at this stage.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to bring it to everybody.
And may I interject to say, if he needs a permit, he just need to contact the permits department.
Permit is Ron Webb's secret dump place that I was informed about seven weeks ago? And that requires, that only happens if I'm not mistaken, between 5:30 and 6:30 in the morning.
There you go. And Ron is out there unlocking the gate.
That's the only one I'm familiar with, their operates like that.
Thank you, Ms. Farnell. We have no AVO appeals today. We have no MPC, MPC or zoning appeals. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
No, go ahead.
Unlock the gate every morning.
Just, just, just one thing. I think on last, our last meeting, I made a report about something that we talked about in the public safety meeting with regard to, oh, I made reports on two. Both the change to the EMS ordinance, just revising, the Public Safety Committee felt that that was no longer a requirement, and you'll see the piece of legislation is on our agenda for vote to follow through with that change. And then with regard to public gates, or private gate entries for access from public safety, that piece of legislation is also on for introduction.
And Chief, what I'd like to do, you don't have to come up, you can, I think it's going to be important, certainly in southeast Shreveport, but in some other areas as well, that we have a couple of public meetings talking about this or making sure that the announcement's out, because while we are talking about any residential neighborhoods with a gate, we're also talking about self-storage places and things like that, and I want to be sure that we give them time to know what's coming, what, let them get their expenses, because most of those homeowners associations are working on a, on a calendar budget, and they may need to make sure they have those funds there.
Right, and the ordinance reads that I think they have till December the 31st to comply. Are you, are you wanting us to post for public meetings, or?
Well, we just need to talk about it over the next week and figure out how to, how to best approach that.
Okay.
And he's got the best contact list.
Okay, all right.
But I'll, I'll reach out to you.
All right, thank you.
Any other reports?
Mr. Chairman, we did have an Audit and Finance Committee meeting earlier this afternoon. We reviewed the findings of the Nona report as it related to the contract between the financial advisor and the city of Shreveport. The staff, I believe, did a good job of going through the Nona report, and we have a written, some written recommendations that is coming from the Audit and Finance Committee. I've asked council staff to make sure, and internal audit office to make sure, that each council member get a copy of those findings. Please let us know, or the staff know if you have any questions or concerns. And I believe we'll be making a more formal recommendation or moving forward with some legislation at the next council meeting. So on tomorrow, I'll try to lay it out a little bit better than what I'm doing today, but I do want to make sure that all of the council members that are not a part of the committee get a copy of the written findings that is coming from the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Shale.
Do you or the clerk have any comments on the letter that was filed in the office of the mayor in relation to veto ordinance 52, 2013?
I think that would be in line with the veto of the other related ordinances.
The issues are the same as they were at the last council meeting, Mr. Shale, and I believe Mr. Oliver Jenkins had some comments at the end that I don't know whether he'll be repeating.
I'm happy to repeat him again. As requested, I did kind of forward just a email summary of what the intent of my comments were as requested by the mayor after the last meeting, and he acknowledged receipt of that. I'm sure the minutes of our previous council meeting are available. I don't necessarily intend to rehash the same thing over, but happy to if there's intent or request.
I'm fine with that. I mean, that was, that was an excellent explanation, and it was to the point, and it was, using the TV commercial, it was full of a lot of beef, so I'll accept that.
Mr. Thompson, I believe that brings us to a clerk's report.
In the interest of time, Mr. [inaudible].
There you go.
If there is no further discussion, let's...
I have one more question of the administration. The Wagner Building. Who, who is the quasi proprietor of that building now, and who regulates, if anybody does, the parking in that building? Is that, there was a time, right, that we rented out leased parking in that building, did we not, to the court?
Wagner Building?
No, we're doing the Beard Building.
Beard Building.
I know we're doing the Beard Building. There was a time that, there was a time that you could rent.
Right, but we, when, if I'm not mistaken, when Louisiana College, I think that's the one they bought, that's when all that...
Went away.
...sees as far as the city is concerned.
So we don't have any...
No, sir.
And that hasn't been sent back to us because they said not to move forward or whatever, that's still theirs, right?
Correct.
Because there's been a little, I'll say quasi-concern that there may be some people in there that, in the parking and doing some other stuff in the basement in there.
You have to see vehicles.
You see vehicles in there that, and maybe some other activity in there, and their question is, whose job is it, since it's private property on some level, who should be going in there and who's regular?
The building is on the, you know, there's the program where you can sign the waiver so that the police can go in if there's suspected intruders into a property. They have signed that waiver, so I do know that, you know, if you see like what you think to be illegal activity or people who are not supposed to be on, who are trespassing...
You know, I'm not saying we need to, I'm just curious.
I'm saying that we need...
I mean, they don't have a security guard.
We'll speak to it directly. I mean, I don't need to beat around the bush, Councilman Jenkins.
No, no, I mean, I don't know who owns it, and I don't know if they got security.
Establish who owns it, it's Louisiana College. They spent about $2.5 million, I think, doing the best of abatement, but don't have the ability to stand up the law school as they intended. The program that Councilman Everson's making reference to is one that we started, I believe, around 2008 or so.
The sign program.
Right, we have to stop intrusions and gatherings now that basically constitutes a statement that's signed by the property owner that gives us the ability to be able to proactively go onto property when we observe violations of any of the city's ordinances and laws. And so, ownership issue is not a question at this point. If there, if there's activity that's going on there that law enforcement needs to be aware of, then give us some specifics on that, and we'll do what's necessary to go out and address that situation, because certainly, if it's now being used as a place where people go and do illegal or illicit things, then that's something that obviously we don't want to have happen, and we'll go out and address it accordingly.
Could we say questionable things?
Well, let me say this. What I'm suggesting is, I'm not sure there's any illicit activity other than gathering, and...
Maybe I can simplify all this. We'll check into it and see what's going on. If it's something illegal, we'll take the appropriate action. If not, we'll leave them alone. It's just simple. Thank you, we'll take care of it.
No problem.
And the problem with gatherings is that gatherings have the potential to create problems.
I, I agree, and I'm not trying to raise an alarm for something that doesn't exist at the moment.
We are proactive administration when it comes to these types of things.
I understand that.
And in fact, that particular sign program has been one of the initiatives that has allowed us to be able to be empowered to go out and address the kind of parking lot gatherings you see after football games on Friday nights and other late-night parking issues and challenges that have plagued the city over the years. This gives us a chance to be able to not have to wait for an actual complaint to be filed by the owner. We have it on file, gives us the ability to be able to go out and act proactively.
Might need to get one of those on Pinky's corner over there, there are Lakeside Acres.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, too much lottery going on over there.
All right.
Turbo the service to the entire neighborhood.
All it takes is a form that's filled out by the property owner. We get that properly filed, it becomes a part of what the folks who are responsible for patrolling that area know is available. We also post a sign that serves as notice for folks who venture onto it, and that at that point gives law enforcement all of the standing that they need to go out and effectively address those types of situations.
I give it chief follow some before I leave, I hope.
It's why, despite what we may see on the media, these numbers that should be in front of you are still going down to lows that are unprecedented.
That's great.
In fact, if I can, I think I see here, year to date, a 9% drop grand total. 3% violent crime, 10% property crime, for a net of 9%. It's efforts like sign and other things that account in part for that success, as well as obviously the continued cooperation by citizens.
That's good news, Mr. May.
Before shutting up, if I could speak to Stan and Dorothy at the end of this, that would be great.
Violation of 4.26, Mr. Jenkins.
4.26, is that in the charter?
Meet in that corner over there.
I'd be happy to do it over there.
And I'm assuming that we got executive session posted, so remember to plan accordingly for executive session after the meeting tomorrow, and let's do it again tomorrow. The gavel will strike promptly at 3:00. We're adjourned.
Good news.
Is that a problem?
Mr. Webb.
If you touch base with Barbers, he said the worker out there, if you look at the picture, he looks just like you.
Oh, really?